I reconvene the meeting of the Board of Education of St. Mary's County for Wednesday, July 21, 2021, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings all. Our Chair Karen Bailey is not with us here in person today. She is following along but cannot be here. And Mrs. Weaver is engaged in some family activities, and so she regretfully is not with us as well, but sends her best to all. First thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move we approve the agenda, the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Board reports. Mary, we're going to start with you today, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine. Good morning, everyone. It is a pleasure to see the Chopticon High School champions, principal, coaches, and supporters here. We have a large audience today, and I'm so glad you're with us, and you're looking beautiful in your red and black. Summer school recovery program started on Tuesday, July the 6th, and students are now in their third week. From school media post, students are learning and having fun while learning. They engage in learning and enjoying the experience to be back in person with their friends and educators. They have face-to-face, asynchronious and asynchronous learning. Some of the things that are happening on the elementary level are they're having water fun day at Hollywood Elementary, Elms Environmental Center activities with volunteers from Chopticon High School, reptile man visited during summer school with snakes, lizards, and turtles, and the primary students are measuring, graphing, and calculating grass growth. They're learning yoga, mastering the correct formation of numbers with Play-Doh, and steam activities with colors and Skittles. And they're making ice cream and doing crafts. Students are reading and being read too, and they are doing math activities too. Lexington Park Elementary School, their summer theme is the Olympics, and they learned all about the Olympics and did research on their favorite Olympian. Dr. Alma Sherwin Community Garden produced a harvest of vegetables, and they donated those veggies to Three Oak Shelter. All levels, elementary, preschool, high school, are engaged in robust learning and challenging enrichment activities. And this is happening each day in our schools during the summer, but they are having fun and they're learning too. But this could not have happened without the, our dedicated and hard-working employees. And they go well beyond the call of duty, and they have exceeded expectations. I want to thank the teachers, the par educators, the administrators and supervisors, food service workers, transportation, building service workers, volunteer guests, and everyone who are making the summer enrichment opportunities for our students' fun while they learn at the same time. So, I am so pleased with the progress that's being made with our students. And I thank the superintendent and Dr. Montgomery and the whole team for putting together good summer program for our students. Thank you.
Jim?
Summer's been kind of slow for me, but I have a teaching moment. I don't have credentials to teach in the school system, but I'm a flight instructor. So, I had this friend of mine that's, I'm teaching to fly. I says, why don't you come out to Kansas with me and help me bring a small plane back? And he did. And all I can tell you is it was about 95 degrees, no air conditioning. He's about 240 pounds. The size of the airplane is about the size of an MG Midget. So, we had to stagger the seats so his shoulder and my shoulder wouldn't hit. And we spent 12 hours coming back, uneventful. So, that's my teaching experience.
That's great.
Good for you. For my board report, I serve on the council for the advancement of school-based health centers, which is a statewide council looking at and advancing the cause of health centers. Not our school clinics, but we now have two school-based health centers located, one at Margaret Brent and one at Spring Ridge Middle School. And due to the Kerwin legislation, those health centers had previously been under the auspices of the Maryland State Department of Education and the Maryland Department of Health. We've now been moved over to the Maryland Department of Health, and that transition will take, take place over the next year. So, I spent time in a meeting discussing how best to work through that transition. So, it, I serve on that as representative for the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, based partly on my board service and partly on my background as a, as a nurse. I would like to introduce our new student board member, Ms. Judy Nguyen, and I'm going to turn it over to you for your board report.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining today, and I am so happy to be here speaking with you all. I'm Judy Nguyen, the new SMCPS student member of the Board of Education, and I'm a rising senior at Lenartown High School, and I'm enrolled in the Academy of Global and International Studies. Prior to this year, I served as the president of the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, and I have worked numerous years at the local, state, and national level concerning the student voice. I'm so happy to be carrying on this role, and I have some big shoes to fill because Naginori was an amazing student member. Going into this school year, my focus for my term is on reconnecting. I believe that the school system's most valuable asset is the conducive environment towards successful social-emotional learning and bonding. This past school year has highlighted the shortcomings of the virtual schooling and environment. Many students were not able to connect during this time, and it shows in the data, the surveys, the statistics, et cetera. I want students to be able to rebuild those relationships with their peers, their teachers, their administrators, their building service workers, and especially themselves, because as we all know, mental health is extremely important. I want to emphasize that my seat at this table is not just for me, but for the 18,000-plus students in SMCPS. And this is why I'll work hard towards conveying the student voice accurately. I'll be working with Dr. Smith and Dr. Marr with the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, where I'll be meeting with students all throughout the county in order to understand their issues, concerns, and beliefs. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Dr. Smith?
So, before I start, I want to make sure that I have my, I have my script ready. So, not many slides, but they're important slides. As Mrs. Washington highlighted, we've got an incredible amount of summer learning going on. And although you might not be able to come and visit the school, everybody engaged and involved has been doing a really good job of providing updates for what the children are doing through social media. So, if you don't follow SMCPS Twitter, you desperately need to. It is the, the feel-good feed that lets you know that it's all going to be okay. It's all going to be okay. We've got incredible, passionate adults working with incredibly gifted children, and we're closing gaps, we're extending understanding, and we are absolutely reconnecting with one another. So, it's great. Please follow, read along, comment, let us know what you think. Also, we're in a large community, and there is, there continues to be incredibly productive community partners and student supports. We heard last week, we, last time we met, we had the Patuxent partnership and all of the resources affiliated with, with their incredible work as well as the base. But we also have, people continue to give to us through the Shoe Fund. We've got thousands and thousands of dollars and hundreds and hundreds of pairs of shoes for our students. We, we partner, we work with the Sleep in Heavenly Peace that was co-founded by one of our, one of our former employees, Deb Fowler. They delivered their 300th bed last week that was, that was built through donation and, and community partnership and the actual labor of, of our people coming together. Just incredible to think that they're, first of all, to recognize that there is that need in St. Mary's County, and then also to recognize that there are people who are, who are deeply committed to it. And the NAACP, faithful partner of St. Mary's County Public Schools, they are getting ready for the school supply, their school supply drive, and August 14th is their back-to-school fair. It's never too early to get that information out. We will continue to push it. We hope to see hundreds and hundreds of people there that day to get our kids all ready for an incredible 2021, 2022 school year. So, reference to what's going on this summer, you'll see in front of me, I have bags. In each one of these bags, there are, I would pull them up, but I don't want to in any way pull one to the top or in any way. We have each, we have the students' individual names who are involved in the Esser Summer School Recovery Program at the elementary and the middle and the high school. That's over 1,600 students who are involved, elementary, middle, and high. We also have students who are involved in all of the summer programming that, that usually happens, Fine Arts Camps and Tech Ventures Camps, which is Space Camp, which is kind of the envi, the evolution to it, Environmental, 21st Century, Bridges in Recovery. And then we also have our students who are involved in virtual work, either directly synchronously with a, with a teacher who's checking in and following along, or asynchronously where they are, they're on the Edutunity Platform recovering work that may have been lost over the school year. So, 3,000 kids are engaged in that work all across. We have over 600 adults who are working with them. And so, you referenced the fact that we've got a lot, we've got a lot of adult hands leaning in and helping with this work. And there is no possible way for us to recognize all of them. Also included in the list when you're going through counselors and school safety assistants, they're also very much involved in work, and our nurses. We have nurses in our, in our buildings as well. But here at Central Office, we have Ms. Stephanie Stone, who is in the audience today. And Ms. Stephanie Stone is a literacy coach at Chopticon High School. Go figure. Chopticon High School, what incredible impact they're having across the entire county and state. She worked with Giselle Schrader and Ayanna Foster Kelson, who is a third-grade teacher at Lenartown Elementary School. To go out to find people who are willing to donate some neat stuff for kids. So, there is a Andy Armadillo hand puppet. Everybody wants that. There, there are hand sanitizer, sure, why not. There's Brewster's gift card, everybody wants that. There are meal tickets for Texas Roadhouse to go with your Andy Armadillo hand puppet. There's a lovely pen. There are four tickets to Blue Crab, to a Blue Crabs game. And then there's a lovely pink pig freckle t-shirt. I was going to wear it, but it's a small. So, nobody, nobody needs to see that. So, we have several bags, and we would love to have board members draw names so that we can then recognize each one of these individuals who gets the benefit of being drawn today, and we'll, we'll go out to the school, we'll drop off their, their bag. So, but I, because sometimes I get off script. Stephanie, Ms. Stone obviously knows that, so she gave me a script, and so I shall read the script as I want to do because that's important. At this time, we'd like to recognize all of the students who are participating in one of our many summer learning programs. We are currently running summer school in person, virtually and asynchronously. We also have extended learning opportunities for students not enrolled in summer school. We are proud of each and every one of them for making progress this summer and moving forward with their learning. Thank you to the SMCPS staff who have been working with students, and thank you to their families and caregivers who have encouraged their students to participate because it doesn't, none of this happens without support at home. The backpack today, our incentives provided by the following businesses: The Blue Crabs Regency, awesome; Texas Roadhouse, delicious; Sweet Frog, Chick-fil-A, and Brewster's Ice Cream. And at this time, we would like to have each board member draw a name to win a backpack. And really, I can't get up. I'm, I'm stuck at the seat, so I would really like to have Ms. Stone, if you could come forward, could you come forward and, and grab a bag? And what we'll do is we'll, we'll have, the three board members can draw the Esser 1, 2, and 3, elementary, middle, and high, and then we'll let Ju, Ms. Nguyen, because she's new to the board, and this is the first time here, you're going to get to draw from all three of those bags. So, you're going to cover all of the programs as well as all of our virtual kits. How awesome is that?
All right.
All right.
All right. So, for Esser High School, kind of dig down in here. And we have Gabriel Akpan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, Gabriel, awesome. You're going to get a wonderful freckle, and this is a bag too, so you can wear this freckle pink bag proudly.
Okay, Christopher Sean Pinkney.
Mr. Pinkney is going to get this, wow, they are just winning and winning this great pink bag.
Elementary?
Elementary.
Connor Brian Grubie?
Grubie, all right. Connor's going to get himself a beautiful pink bag. These also make lovely gifts. If you have, like, for a young lady in your life. All right. Ms. Nguyen?
I'm so excited.
So, from 21st Century Title I and Head Start, all those, the little guys.
There's a lot in here.
Yeah.
There are. It's like, trying to grab a spaghetti noodle.
Yeah.
Adrian Somerville.
Woo, Adrian Somerville!
Thank you.
Awesome.
Online learning.
Online learning. Are people at home? Maybe they're watching right now.
They might be.
I hope they are. Sadie Gravel.
Sadie, all right, look at that. Picking the girls. Our last one.
Okay, who's this lucky person? Reiken Robertson.
Reiken Robertson, awesome. So, I, thank you so much for playing along, Ms. Stone and, and, and Ms. Schrader and Ms. Foster Kelson. So, there are 3,000 little strips of paper that they cut into little, I mean, on top of all the going out and finding supporters and everything, but to organize all of that and to recognize all of that and to draw attention to all of them. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. The only other thing that I really, really need to talk about this morning is COVID cases. Hey, it's been in the news, right? So, we're all hearing about COVID cases. We're seeing numbers like there's a 300% increase, or a 400% increase, or a 500% increase. Always, we try to come back to the actual numbers and the data that we have in front of us. We are seeing more cases over the last two weeks than we had had previously. Toward the end of June in St. Mary's County, it got really, really quiet, and that was, that was great news. And we, the, we repealed the mask, mask, well, we didn't. The governor repealed the mask mandate in schools. We followed that direction July 1. We do see more cases last week than the week before. There were 42 cases across St. Mary's County, so we are going up. What, what everybody really needs to realize is that we also have this information disaggregated by age group. And unfortunately, the age groups aren't the way I'd like to have them broken out, but they're the way science or the government or the Maryland Department of Health or whoever breaks it out. So, they have the 0 to 19. So, we'll call those the public school-aged kids, although our public school-aged kids are usually gone by the time they're 19, although they can stay to 21. The 20 to 39, or as I like to call them, the incredibly irresponsible people who are out doing stuff with each other. The 40 to 59 group, which of course is the best group, I think. And then the 60-plus group. The data that we're seeing is that the 0 to 19 group, right, and this is the unvaccinated group. This is if you're under the age of 12, you do not, you are not eligible for a vaccine. If you are 12 and up, you can only have Pfizer. But this group, 0 to 0 to 19, we saw spikes early on in the year, but right now, we're averaging about one case per 100,000. So, that's the data that we're, we're following. For the group 20 to 39, that group was the highest and came down, and it's going up again. And a lot of it is because these are the people who are out in the larger community. They are out socializing, they are out, they are traveling. That's not to say other people don't travel, but they're out. And so, we see an uptick with, with that group. 40 to 59, again, we're seeing that group is really about one case per 100,000. And then the 60-plus, and this is the, the 65 and over is the, is the most heavily vaccinated. Almost 88% of these people are vaccinated. They are the most at risk. They are the reason why we closed schools and we sent home children before we ever had a confirmed case, because we didn't want the children who were, that weren't symptomatic or lightly symptomatic to come home and infect an older person in their home. And that was one of the most tragic things that you would see on the news, would be some incredibly tearful seven-year-old worried that they might in some way be endangering their beloved grandmother, or grandfather, or grand aunt. These numbers are relatively low. That being said, we watch, we watch these numbers every single day. I continue to meet with Dr. Brewster on a regular basis. We will be tracking all of this all the way through. We are waiting to hear from the Maryland Department of Education, the Maryland Department of Health, and the governor's office as far as what their concrete direction is. You can't close schools at one point and do a mask mandate and do all of this stuff and then say, well, now, everybody, you get to make your own decisions. Thank you very much. We need leadership, and we need it to be consistent and, and, and backed by true numbers and data. I need to know what the new thresholds are for when we should be doing layered, the, the, the layered protection. If there is only one case per 100,000, it's very challenging to say that all children should wear a mask every single day, all day long. That is a, that is, that is really, if you haven't worn a mask for eight hours, you need to, you need to do it. And you need to recognize that it is absolutely an important strategy, and it is in response to, to, to a pandemic or to something happening in the community, absolutely. But you don't just wear it without there being something, unless you're always going to wear a mask. And so, I realize that we have, we've had some comment coming in, and they want to know what we're doing. And I will tell you that right now, we are following the governor's direction. We do not, we do not have a mask mandate in any of our schools. That being said, masks are available to all of our students. We have over three-quarters of a million masks that are available to all students. And we will follow what the direction of the Maryland State Department of Ed, the Maryland Department of Health, and the governor says ultimately. And I would imagine that this is going to be a much larger conversation as we get into August, but we are indeed tracking all of that information. We also have 3,000 kids, over 2,000 kids that have been meeting in person, unmasked, and with minimal social distancing for the last three weeks. And knock on wood, we've got pretty clean data. I will tell you that we continue to update our website, and if you want to know exactly what's going on at every single one of our school sites, it is there as well. So, that is the last thing that we need to talk about. For all of this, I know this is going to be an ongoing conversation. And when we get to the board meeting in August, we will track the data. We will have, we will have a much, a much larger conversation. And hopefully, by then, we will have true leadership that helps us with, with numbers and metrics and a clear path as to, as to what to do when we open schools. But as of right now, there is no mask mandate in the state of Maryland, and so there is no mask mandate in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, with that, I conclude my remarks, and I think we're then going to get on with a fantastic opportunity for
Recognitions.
Recognition.
Yes, please.
All right. So, let me close out of all of this.
We have recognitions.
There we go.
For the Chopticon High School state championships. Mr. Watson?
Do it from the podium, or?
You can either. I'll do the podium.
Podium? Good morning, everyone. This spring season, our student athletes and coaches from Chopticon High School performed at the highest levels possible in state championship play. Quite an accomplishment with everything they had to overcome regarding the global pandemic. This morning, we recognized students who, under the direction of their dedicated coaches, have achieved the highest level of success in public school competition. First, I'll start with track and field athletes. I have a quote for you. "Life is often compared to a marathon, but I think it is more like being a sprinter. Long stretches of hard work punctuated by brief moments in which we are given the opportunity to perform at our best." Olympian sprinter Michael Johnson. The Chopticon relay team certainly took the opportunity to perform at their best during their brief moment of eight minutes and six seconds in the 4x800 meter relay this past, this past spring. On June 19, 2021, the 3A Maryland State Championship for Track and Field was held at the PG Sports and Learning Complex in Landover, Maryland. Chopticon, Chopticon High School captured the boys' MPSSAA 3A 4x800 meter relay state championship. Would Mr. Perner, principal at Chopticon High School, please join me at the podium? With schools being out, the entire team actually is here, but the entire coaching staff is not. For those that are here, please approach the podium as your name is called to be recognized. Students and coaches today will be receiving a citation from Senator Jack Bailey, as well as a certificate from our own Board of Education.
All right. The Chopticon Boys 4x8 relay team, Mason Hoover, come on up. Douglas Hoover III, Jeffrey Wedding, and Zach Wedding. Assistant Coach Christina Weir, I do not believe she's with us today. And the head coaches of Chopticon High School are Kelly Schmidt and Paul Herbert. You can come up as well. Please join me in congratulating our 2021 MPSSAA 3A state champion 4x8 relay team for Chopticon High School.
If you can't stand in the back after I do this, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if everybody sticks around, we'll do a whole bunch of pictures up here if that's taking a break. And believe it or not, so your board chair, Mrs. Bailey, she really wants to make sure that she sees this. She's, she really likes Chopticon. I don't know what the deal is. All right, that's a good feed.
Onto our 3A state championship baseball team from Chopticon High School. Bear with me, I have another quote. Ray, I apologize. It's not an Oriole. It's actually a Yankee. So, I apologize ahead of time for the quote. It's a good one. So, "Competing at the highest level is not about winning. It's about preparation, courage, understanding, and nurturing your people, and heart. Winning is the result." Major League Baseball player, manager, and executive Joe Torre. The Chopticon baseball team displayed the most heart from a collective group of players and coaches that I have personally witnessed in a very long time. Whether it was an eight-run bottom-of-the-six inning comeback against Towson, capitalized by a 3-1 homerun by Shawn Cameron, or a complete game shutout delivered by Tyler Quade in the state semifinals against Centennial, or seven innings of shutout baseball pitched by Shane Smith in the state championship game, all of these players and coaches certainly have and have displayed heart. On June 18, 2021, the 3A state championship for baseball was held at the Southern Maryland Blue Crab Stadium in Waldorf, Maryland. Chopticon High School defeated Athleton High School from Howard County by a score of 4 to 2. Gentlemen, please, and ladies, trainers, if you are here, please approach the podium as your name is called. For those that are here, we thank you for your attendance, and thank you for your hard work and for an outstanding season. Mr. Perner?
Chopticon varsity baseball team, Davey Reynolds, Ryan Clark, Casey Alvey, Colton Eister, Cody Lehman, Dmitri Johnson, Jameson, sorry, Connor Gardner, Tyler Quade, Shawn Cameron, Jordan Fonce, Blake Atkins, Aiden Hill.
You can come across the front of the podium, across the desk here.
You can stand right in front of us. We don't mind looking at your backs.
Brandon Mills, Shane Smith, Howard Miller, and Philip McCarthy. The team statisticians were Alexis Bowen, Tiara Brown, and Alex Williams. Coaches for Chopticon High School are Brad Coombs, Neil Camp, David Sapp, Ryan Sapp, and Ray Sapp.
Sap trifecta.
I was going to say.
All right. So, you guys are going to have to, we're going to have to All right, so you guys are going to have to, we're going to have to, this doesn't work. You're going to have to kind of squish in, off to the side like one, you're-
Hey, we know how to do it.
So you're going to angle a little bit and you angle behind us and you, you angle that way and you come in like, look at that, see you guys, come on, you're on a team.
Well, and while they're all lining up, shall we all give them a round of applause for their performance?
Absolutely. All right, we have coaches then.
Mr. Sap, you cannot hide back there.
Yeah, come on, get on the end or something, you know. How's that look?
Sorry. Move the pink bags for you guys.
Come on.
Push in the chair.
Push in the chair, we'll hear it, fold it, look at that.
There we go.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of a big deal, maybe we'll get a good shot, right? That's awesome. Great, you guys can go. Up, same thing, make it look good.
Thank you.
You the center, coaches on the sides.
Thank you.
Well done. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you all. Wonderful to see you.
How about if we all get out of the way or else they can move down that way?
There you go. Yeah, we got to keep our winners.
Okay, guys, I'll move my ship this way a little bit. Okay, thank you, guys.
There is no public hearing. Um, we have public comment. Uh, I understand we have-
Yes, we have.
We have public comment. Um, I have a statement to read and then, um, as I'm reading it, uh, I will ask Mr. McCulca to, um, call the first person up and if you have written remarks, if you would, um, provide them to Mr. McCulca, he will load them into Board Docs for, um, the Board to all be able to see. Um, to remind everyone, speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speakers, per speaker and you may not yield your time to someone else. Um, let's see, uh, maximum of 20 minutes will be allowed for public comment at this time, um, unless it pertains to an action item on the agenda. The Board encourages people, uh, speakers to present written statements to the Board Secretary. This allows us to have time to consider the comments later as well as for the maximum number of speakers to present during the initial comment period. The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. As the policymaking body of the school system, it's most appropriate for citizens to address general policies. The Board takes this time to listen and consider but not to comment. It's not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns on those, about those things, uh, should be resolved at the level closest to the situation, um, or can be directed to the Superintendent. We sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we can't have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. Um, and so with that, Mr. McCulca?
Beverly Gude.
If you'd go to the co-, uh, to the podium over there, that would be great. Thank you.
I wasn't going to come and speak today. Um, I was just going to kind of see what goes on at these meetings because I've never been to one. My older sister children went to St. Mary's County Public Schools and my grandchildren go there, so, um, it wasn't until, um, recently that I started to see some of the things that were going on in the school that I was very unhappy with. And I've always been taught, even if I'm the only one to stand, I need to stand. And so I basically, I don't have anything written down, I've kind of just got the agenda here and was writing notes, but I see that on your agenda today, family life and human development is something that you're going to be covering, so I figure, well, maybe I should go ahead and get up and talk instead of waiting until the next time, which I'll try to come next time as well. But I am against the teaching as far as the transgenderism, the sexual orientation, the critical race theory. None of these things, I feel, have any place in a public school. These things should be talked about at home, talked at home. It, it, school should be for history, math, English, science, things like that. Um, and I know a lot of parents might be embarrassed to talk about their children, but I mean, it's got to be the same embarrassing thing for the teacher to be able to talk to, um, these children with these things. And, um, I had a robocall that came into my house and, uh, it was, they had sent a survey to both of my granddaughters, one is 11 and the other one just turned, um, 14. And I had a chance to review some of those things and, you know, I feel like if we're going to be questioning these students, I, I feel like the parents should know what's going on or what you're asking these children to, to answer. If you want to know what they, they feel, that's fine, but the parents should have a right to review these things. I don't think children that are 10 years old, 11 years old, even 14 years old, even 17 years old, it really depends on the actual person, uh, can make good decisions by themselves. They need the counsel of their parents, uh, not only their friends, their teachers, their pastors, whoever is in authority in their life. But I don't feel like they should be having to do all of these things alone. Now, it's part of growing up is gearing these children. It's like not keeping them in a bubble, but kind of like a plant in a greenhouse. You kind of want to encourage it, teach it about the things around there, and then when it's ready, then transplant it into a bigger pot, but not just kind of throw them out there, so to speak. And that's really all the notes that I have right now. I'm glad the masks are gone, that was something I was going to talk about, but you've pretty much answered my question on that and, uh, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move, uh, the Board of Education accept the consent agenda as approved. Approval date minutes of June 30th, 2021, personnel administrative and supervisory, personnel, teachers, conscious discipline, family life and human development education, Johnson's control security cameras, property acquisition, property lease termination, Department of Information Technology Microsoft software contract, and reappointment of St. Mary's County Public Schools Ethics Panel members.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is, uh, our action item, uh, letters, training materials, Courtney Dorak. I'm sorry if I messed your name.
Perfectly. Perfect.
And thank you for the materials that you left here for us. Much appreciated.
What's so funny is I'm so used to, um, Google now, I got to find my present button.
Right there.
There we go.
Right there. Right there. All the way down.
All the way down.
Right there.
You want to help me, Dr. Smith?
Sure do.
Thanks, appreciate it.
That's why I'm up and running around.
Right there at the bottom. Perfect. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Um, so I'm Courtney DeVorek, I'm the Supervisor of Instruction for Elementary ELA. Um, so, um, just a brief presentation on the purchase of Letters Training Materials, um, from Boriger Sobris. Um, so just sort of, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling is a professional learning opportunity. It's training that we can provide to our, um, K through five teachers that are really going to give them a deep knowledge to be literacy and language experts. I think one of the biggest realizations, um, when you start the training is that learning to read is not a natural process. We are oral language, we, you know, that's how we evolved and then writing was invented and once that was invented, now we have to learn how to read. So we don't have the pathways in our brain to do it naturally and so it really does have to be taught in a very explicit and systematic way. Um, and Letters really kind of goes over all of that and gives teachers the tools to do that. Um, and the Letters units are going to address every, all five essential components of reading, um, and those foundational concepts linked to it. Um, they are set up as, um, two experiences. Units one through four is really going to give you those foundations, talk about phonological awareness, um, early and advanced phonics, morphology, etymology, and then units five through eight is going to go into the vocabulary and comprehension, um, and the big Y of reading. So like I said, it's, it's not a program, it's really giving teachers knowledge about how students learn to read. Louisa Moats, who is one of the creators, has the beautiful quote that teaching reading is, is rocket science, it's like teaching rocket science. Um, and a lot of the information that you're going to find in Letters is not currently in any of our teacher prep programs. Um, so I've been in education for 15 years and I shouldn't have learned about the simple view of reading for the first time just a couple of years ago. I shouldn't have learned about Skarsbor rope and to really see like the complicated processes just a couple of years ago. So it's really, I think, an experience that we would want as many of our teachers to have as possible. As I said, it's not a program and we know that programs don't teach children, teachers do. So the more that we can prepare our teachers to teach those programs, the better off we're going to be. What's beautiful about Letters is it really does complement a lot of the curriculum and programs that we already have in place here in St. Mary's County Public Schools and it's going to give our teachers the tools to be more diagnostic practitioners and really implement those programs in a more effective way. It's going to provide them with good instructional strategies, insights, um, help support students who are struggling, and it definitely supports a lot of the work we've already been doing on our universal screening teams that we have started. Um, a couple of years ago, we started working with the National Center on Improving Literacy to really look at how we're screening students for, um, reading difficulties and at first we were just sort of like giving the assessment and now we're really digging deep into that data and making good practical decisions on what to do next. Letters is only going to enhance that and really give our teachers the tools, um, to take what they know about reading development and apply that to their, um, tier-one instruction. Um, and I think that's the beautiful thing about it too. It's, it's not about putting kids in an intervention, it's about keeping kids in the classroom and being able to differentiate and target your instruction in a way that is going to meet all of the learners in front of you. So, um, and I just want to say, so MSDE gave us the opportunity at, in the fall, um, to put a couple of teachers through Letters Training and at that time, the fall was crazy. We were online learning for the first time. Um, so we did have about three SMCPS employees take that. What you need to know about Letters is it is each unit or each experience, units one through four, it's worth six credits, which is about 90 hours of work, all right? So keep that in mind when, so we had those three and then this fall, MSDE was like, we have more slots. We had a waiting list, we were able to put 40 teachers through the training then. One of our, um, literacy coaches, Mary Pat Smith, then got Letters Facilitator trained and she was able to run an additional cohort of 20 and then we are currently have 27 teachers. So that's about 80 teachers of our approximately 377 reading teachers and instructional resource teachers. That's about 20% of our teachers this year who signed up and voluntarily for 90 hours of training because they're hungry for it. This is, this is what it's going, this is what they need in order to really support those students. And we think about, you know, the gaps and the learning loss and everything that everyone's talking about, um, it's not going to be a program that catches the kids up, it's going to be knowledgeable teachers, so. So we do have a proposed timeline, um, for this coming school year, we already put out interest surveys. In the fall, we're booked already, so we have 33 teachers plus a waiting list who really, who, um, want this training. In the spring, we have allotted for about 53 teachers, um, and we already have for a co-, our units one through four, and we already have about, um, 20 teachers who have said, yes, definitely, we want that if it becomes available. And then we also want to then offer five through eight. So I'm going to get certified in one through four and Mary Pat Smith is going to get certified in five through eight and the first cohort we're going to offer for five through eight is already full, um, in the spring and then we have, um, teachers who have already signed up for Cohort B. So like I said, teachers are hungry for it, it's, um, it just really does a beautiful job of making reading instruction make sense and providing that background and knowledge for teachers. So the action item is, um, so should I add two questions now?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We're going to do questions. Jim, I will start with you.
I have no questions.
Mary?
Thank you very much. This is a very interesting program and it's very good that our school system and MSDE is providing, uh, up-to-date information, how things change. Things are not always the way they used to be, they improve new strategies and learn so that they provided this opportunity and we sent teachers there and those teachers can come back and teach a cohort group. So we're getting all our teachers online with this. So it is for all, any, and all teachers?
So there's an early, um, E-Latters, which is for, uh, pre-K, Head Start, three to, teachers, but three to four, and we actually had 21 pre-K teachers take that this spring as well. Um, and then Letters is really, they say K through five, but I also feel like there are very good benefits for getting middle school and even some high school teachers trained too, especially those teachers dealing with, um, students having difficulties with reading.
Yeah, because it may be different reading for pleasure, uh, reading science or social studies or figuring out math problems, it's a different kind of reading. So I want to thank you for this, uh, this is good and, uh, I would like to learn more about it, to see how it actually works.
Join us on August 5th, Mary Pat will be here, teaching Unit, uh, three if you are interested and then August 19th, we'll actually be at Duke because I think they're replacing carpet here. So 8:30 to 4 o'clock if any of you are interested, we would love to have you. That'll be Unit 4.
Judy, what questions do you have?
All right, so I have two younger siblings that are going to go through the elementary schooling SMCPS and I know, I'm very involved in education and I know a lot of parents have similar, um, like, expectations of their children. So, um, on the slide, it says that you provide teachers with instructional strategies and I know, um, parenting is a very essential part of elementary schooling as well as teacher school, um, teacher instruction, but what are the expectations of parents going to be, um, after the implementation of Letters?
I would, so in terms of expectations for parents, I think it's just that open communication with teachers and having, you know, especially if their students are struggling, even if they're not struggling, making sure that they're having constant conversations with the teachers and that, I think the Letters Training is going to make the teachers more knowledgeable and to be able to provide parents with strategies and supports that they can put in place at home to kind of support that reading development in their students.
All right, excellent. So, um, this, this program will be providing parents with additional materials and strategies.
So it's, it's a more of a training for, it's, so it's not a program, it's more of a training for teachers. So it's not really providing parents anything per se, again, it's giving those teachers kind of those instructional strategies and that background understanding and, and how the brain works when it's reading to really help support, um, the, the needs of their students in their classroom.
Thank you.
In an ideal world, this would be incorporated into a university curriculum as a pre-service.
Absolutely.
So that when teachers graduated with their credentials, they would have a deep end, but we recognize that we can't change-
We cannot.
-how higher ed works.
Yep.
Nor can we truly impact what courses they require and offer. So we are left with, um, a fantastic, um, uh, Letters is absolutely fantastic and to the, I, I see the teachers when they come in here in the morning and Mary Pat works with them all day long, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith works with them all day long and works with them all day long and they leave chatting and, and excited and talking and extending and making connections and talking about how it's going to come back. And so this is, um, it's, it's really, you know, all they have to do is let us go and run universities. We, we could make the best teacher prep program ever.
That's true. We, and we've already had teachers who have taken Letters, um, one through four, who, who want to like develop PLCs together and just like keep learning and keeping the conversation going and I feel like that rarely happens sometimes after PD. You get it and you go and you're done, um, and this is not the case with Letters at all.
Very good. Does this dovetail with student IEPs? In other words, um, do you see benefit- In other words, um, do you see benefit for students with IEPs? And, um, how do you see it benefiting them?
So I think one of the biggest benefits, um, is that it's going to give teachers that good, deep background knowledge of the reading development and where students should be kind of in each of the phonological awareness phases and phonics and those good instructional strategies. So I think what it's going to do is give teachers some really good, um, skills to teach all students and to intervene right there in their classroom. Um, and hopefully in the wrong, long run, what that's going to equate to is that we're going to have fewer students who are being identified as students with reading difficulties because students receive that really good quality tier one instruction, um, that we're, we don't always, that we don't always give, unfortunately. Um, so, and then it's also going, so then there's going to be more resources and supports for those students with IEPs because those caseloads are, hopefully, wouldn't be as, um, wouldn't be as, um, large. But then also I think it just gives a general education teacher, just again, those supports and structures in place and that knowledge to be able to say, this is exactly what this student needs. I can have that conversation with that special education teacher together. Um, and that we can kind of create that programming that's going to be the, support them the best.
Do you have special ed teachers at the elementary level who are also deciding to take this training?
We've had a handful already, yes, which I think is phenomenal.
How many of our elementary schools have been touched by staff who've chosen to take this professional development?
Eighteen out of nineteen.
Very good.
Yeah.
Um, and a classroom-wise grade level, are you seeing from each school pretty much, um, fair, uh, coverage across the board?
Yeah, and I will say it's interesting because, um, especially when you look at units one through four, it's really kind of more focused on those foundational skills. But what we're finding is that a lot of our intermediate teachers are getting students, especially after the past couple of years, where there's huge gaps. So, um, we've probably seen an equal amount of primary and intermediate teachers taking it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes, um, I had a thought based on what the student board members said, how pa- parents want to participate in their students' learning. Just like with conscious discipline, they had sessions for parents.
Yes.
Because the teachers were doing it in the classroom and the parents could encourage it at home. Will you have something, not this eight-hour thing, but maybe, uh, thirty-minute or an hour, something where parents can come in or send information to parents on how to best help your struggling child with reading? Uh, based on the things that the teacher learned, but not to that magnitude.
Right.
Do you see the connection what I'm making with conscious discipline?
Yeah.
And the training that they have for parents, they had it for teachers? Is it some kind of training for parents? That will help them help their child at home to, you know, to foster what the teacher is doing in the classroom?
So I, Letters does not, Voyager Sopers doesn't provide anything like that. But that's not to say that that could be a consideration in the future of something that we could offer with our, you know, as an ELA.
Because reading is fundamental to everything that our students do. Because if they aren't reading on, um, level by third grade, it, they're a major problem. So if it's anything you can do for the parents in the lower grade to help their children, because they are not teachers, they are not educators, they'd say, these are some of the things you can do at home to help your child with reading if they are struggling. Because a parent would feel helpless if they know their child is struggling, that we don't want it all on the teacher and parents want to participate. So, that's just a thought.
I don't think it's a bad thought, Ms. Washington.
It's a thought.
Good thought.
Well, with that, if there are no further questions, is?
I have one more. Um, so I was looking through the board documents and I didn't see like a date of implementation. So when is this being, like, when are we aiming to implement this fully in the system?
So we were, um, so this past school year, um, it's currently happening until, um, so it was a few in the fall and then throughout the spring. So then next year, it'll start in September, um, and run for four months. So teachers for, um, each month, they'll do two back-to-back sessions at night, three hours apiece. Um, and then there's an online component as well. And so we'll run a fall session and then we will run, um, four spring sessions. We'll do two sessions for units one through four and two sessions for units, um, five through eight. And those will start in January and run through June.
And I would imagine that stu, that teachers who have already received a professional development are already utilizing this, the skillset in their classrooms.
Yes.
So, um, and knowing teachers, um, they tend to share that knowledge with their colleagues. So I love the fact that you said that, um, they're starting to set up their own professional learning communities, um, so that they can learn from each other, but also share best practices and, um, help each other out through that. So that's fantastic. Very much appreciated. Um, with that, is there, um, if there are no further questions, um, is there a motion to approve this item?
Yes, I moved that the Board of Education approve the purchase of instructional materials and online licenses required to implement Language Essential for Teachers of Reading and Spelling Letters from Voyager Sopers Learning at a cost of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents. Further, that the Board approve additional purchases from Voyager Sopers le- learning as needed and its funding permits to support Letters.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have, um, the next item, information item, virtual information item, Mr. Jaffers and Ms. Giles.
Nope. Been the folder. There you go. Yep. Nope. Yep.
Well, uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The slide pirate captured me again. I was unable to put my fifty slides up, so.
You said it, I didn't.
Ms. Giles, uh.
Slide pirate.
The slide pirate, yeah.
I like him.
So she was able to commandeer.
Delete, delete, delete.
Um, but we're here today to talk a little bit about, um, just the, the, uh, Virtual Academy and, um, and the launch thereof. So I'll turn this back over to Ms., uh, Ms. Giles and she can take it from there.
So we have launched our Virtual Academy. Um, we are going to be open for any student in St. Mary's County Public Schools that is enrolled or will be enrolling. Um, we are going to be providing a full-time online instruction for students, grades three through twelve. Uh, we're going to be using a blend of online educational tools and platforms that will be providing an opportunity to continue learning at home for our students through a variety of synchronous, asynchronous, and blended learning. All students in grades nine through twelve will have the opportunity to create hybrid schedules for themselves, attending classes at the Tech Center or at their home schools while choosing to enroll at the Virtual Academy. Right now, we have our website up and have the enrollment forms that are currently live. We have already completed the Tuesday, July thirteenth informational session and that is up on our website where parents can view the, um, slides that we put up there as well as the recorded session. And we have two more informational sessions that will, um, occur before the start of the school year.
Uh, at the link, uh, provided, you can see, uh, that takes you directly to, uh, more of the, the PowerPoint that we share with, um, with families as well as, um, more information. We have a screencast video that sort of encompasses, uh, the Virtual Academy and what we can, what we can deliver and offer. So, um, that's really, uh, the, the long and short of it. It's a quick, quick demonstration, uh, presentation. Uh, we'll take questions, uh, if you have them.
Mr. Davis?
Um, the, uh, as I understand it then, a student can graduate using Virtual Academy?
Yes.
From, from where they are now?
From their homeschool, yep.
And that's a, uh, obviously accredited and everything.
Absolutely.
Very good. Uh, I, that's all I have.
We submitted in the spring, early summer, our, our plan to MSDE for, for virtual education, for virtual coursework to be offered in the fall, and it has been approved. So all of the coursework will be, uh, taught by certificated St. Mary's County Public Schools teachers. And they'll follow the exact course and content and curriculum that you would in a regular class. Really, it's going to be an extension of what we provided when schools were, were, uh, shut to kids, um, last year. So, um, it's, yeah, that's, that's where we are. The only other thing that's not in the presentation that does deserve to be mentioned is that all of the funding for this is in the ESER three grant that we, that was released the last week of June. We had written, prepared, had prepared and then wrote specifically following the release of the grant and have submitted to MSDE last week. Other school systems, um, and the Public Schools Association of Maryland, PZAM, Public School Superintendent Association of Maryland, uh, is requesting an extension because the ESER three grants were due back to the Maryland State Department of Education by July thirtieth. So, uh, PZAM is actually asking for an extension for, um, all the LEAs because multiple, um, school systems aren't, aren't, said that they can't meet the deadline. Only one school system has, has submitted their ESER three grant. That would be us.
Congratulations.
Well, it's just, it's, it's, it's exceptional work from all, all members, um, over, under assessment and accountability and working with Dr., Dr. Jaffers, as well as the Department of Curriculum and Instruction and all of the content supervisors, as well as Dr. Marr, as well as everybody over in finance, making sure that, and special ed, making sure that all the component pieces work together. But we are submitted and ready to go.
And just to be, so we're clear, Jim, um, this is not a different curriculum. It is simply a different method of delivery, okay?
Good.
Mary?
I, I want to thank you again for all the work that all of you did to put it together to be the first school system and the only one to meet the deadline to get this grant funding in. I really appreciate that. You know, it's been a unprecedented year, over year, we've been going through different things. We've had to change, we had to pivot, we had to be resilient. We had to be things we didn't know we could be. We became that. We were, we exceeded expectations. So I want to thank you and everybody that worked with you to get it done. And this is a wonderful opportunity for students. It is a choice.
It is absolutely a choice.
It's a choice. And how many students do you, are you anticipating? Do you have any idea?
Well, um, that, that's a good question. We, we are anticipating, um, the goal is ten percent of our population. Uh, as of right now, we have a hundred and seventy students that have signed up formally, uh, for the, uh, for the experience. Um, and as you, as you said, I think Ms. Allen said this, it is the same curriculum. Um, and some people thrived in a virtual environment. They thrived learning virtually. Uh, it was more personalized, they could go at their own pace. Uh, and one of the things that, uh, Ms. Giles and I are working towards is building the community of a virtual learner. And I think that's, uh, those are our big challenges. In addition to our special ed students, we want to make sure that the, the placements are appropriate. So we'd work hand-in-hand with Scott Surveig and his department. So, uh, all in all, the goal is to ten percent of our population, but as of now, we have a hundred and seventy students signed up formally.
Yes, because the data that the superintendent presented showed that some students
Yes.
thrived in the virtual learning situation. So this is an opportunity for them and it meets a lot, a lot of other benefits as well. Um, so you will be housed at the, on Great Most Road? Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
At the old?
Fairlead Academy.
Fairlead Academy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Look, looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Judy?
Um, just so I am aware, um, are full-time online stu-, um, students still enrolled in their homeschool? Or is it just strictly the Virtual Academy? And alongside that, would, would these students still be afforded the same opportunities of sports or, um, clubs and schools or other, um, organizations such as that?
What a great question.
Absolutely. They are still part of their homeschool. They can participate in any clubs, activities, sports, whatever they want to do. They're still considered to be part of that.
And one of the things I've worked with Dr. Montgomery on, um, the idea of voice and choice. Uh, if you're a elementary and middle virtual student, uh, you'll, it'll be mutually exclusive and you're going to have to choose one or the other. You're either going to have to make that commitment to virtual or you'll make that commitment to your brick and mortar school. Um, if you're a high school student and you can provide your own transportation, um, we want to give those students an opportunity of saying, what's what we call curated schedule. They could have a, um, a co-mingled schedule of, of on, of onsite with, uh, virtual experiences, uh, that lend itself to opportunities after school, extracurricular, athletic, et cetera.
All right, thank you.
And transportation will be provided, correct? Meals, everything that students would get in the regular school, meals, transportation?
There is no transportation in a virtual school, so.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. So, well, that, no, that's a very important point because if they do wish to participate in an after-school extracurricular activity or a sport, they will be responsible for their transportation to the school.
Okay.
High school students.
High school, high school students. But now, one of the things we are working on is that there will be transportation options available after school and, and other parts of the grant. So there's, there's going to be, there, there'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot of moving pieces. And as far as food, the food-to-go programs that we offered, that we're, that we're currently offering in some version are going to continue to be offered. Um, and as of right now, Dr. Walker, how long is it, where are we continuing Meals for All?
Through the end of this week.
Through the end?
June of, June thirtieth, twenty-two.
Yeah, so every single child can have, is, may have a, a meal every single day. So, that's going to be, that, that's, our food service people have been heroes throughout and shall continue that role.
That funding is through the ESER three grant?
No, that funding is through.
Federal, okay.
Federal food.
Federal.
Um, I, I really appreciate that, um, we're going forward with this. In conversation with a family member who lives in Fairfax County, um, i- in order to be virtual there for the coming school year, um, you have to have a doctor's note that says that you have a specific health reason that, um, would necessitate you being, uh, virtual. And so when I shared that, that we're not doing that, that, um, no questions asked, we understand that there are, uh, a, a wide variety of reasons that, um, students may want or need to be virtual for the coming year. And I appreciate the fact that the superintendent and staff, um, made that possible and have brought this forward. So, um, you know, the board role was approving the budget. Um, the superintendent's role was making sure that, um, he had a, a solid recommendation coming forward. So, um, clearly he did.
Make it work.
Appreciate this and, uh, and hope that you will come back and share more with us throughout the coming year as to how this is, is, uh, is going. And, um, and there is still time for students to sign up, whether they are currently our, um, students or whether they are being homeschooled or, um, in, in any schooling situat- situation here in the county. Um, we are, we are open and, um, and certainly interested in, um, having them become students of St. Mary's County Public Schools if they so desire, or if they'd like to find out more information about it. So, thank you very much.
I have one more, if you don't mind. So are you looking for a commitment for the entire school year or what? Or if they, it doesn't work?
They're making a commitment for the school year.
For the entire school year?
The, I, I will tell you that we have always made the best decision for children. So in the event that, that we start with one position and then we find whatever information needs to be done. And that's the same for somebody who might have started traditionally in a brick and mortar and they're realizing that it's not working for a whole host of reasons. This is an option, it'll be built in such a way that, uh, a person can fall into it. Because they are following the exact same curriculum that we are following in all of our schools. They will be using the exact same platform. It will be Schoology. Every single teacher? Have I, did I run out of time?
No, sorry.
Are you sure? Dr. Montgomery, I think you, you, I, you already tried it before and then she, I think she put me on stews. And so, but, but every single teacher will be using Schoology next year. Like that, that is one of the, that is one of the silver linings to this year and a half is that we have this fantastic, robust platform that really best helps parents know what's going on in their, in their children's lives and in their classrooms. I, I have never known more what my child did and did not do, um, with the Schoology platform. And every parent has that and it's on your, it's on your phone. You can, you can torment your child right from your phone almost anywhere. You can ruin vacations, weekends.
You're such a champ. Thank you so much. Um, I, you know, I think one of the things, uh, one of the many great things about St. Mary's County is that, um, the school system is, um, you know, to me, relatively smaller. You can get your arms around it and, and really sort of make the changes that are needed and be responsive to the community and to the students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for my here.
All right. Any other, anything else from a board member? All right, well, our next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, August eleventh at nine AM. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.